I'm so glad you're here. All right, ladies and gentlemen, if I may have your attention, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's on, I'm not sure I'm powered up. Mr. Gates, are there any public comments requested? Okay. I would like to take a personal moment that I feel sure you will share with me. We've lost two of our most enduring senior associates in the last few weeks, and I wanted to take a moment to honor their memory. Dr. Jane Harper was one of the first faculty members on Northeast Campus. She taught French, and I think Dr. Patrick told me her children actually took some French lessons from her. She was a musician, she served as Dean of Humanities, then Vice President of Academic Affairs, and then came downtown to the Mayo and Center to be Associate Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs, a total of 47 years with Tarrant County College. Jimmy Madison, and he was Jimmy, not James, was Director of Business Services for 25 years, then he retired, and he became CEO of the Metropolitan Black Chamber of Commerce. He retired again, and he got bored and came back to us and worked at the Senior Program, Dr. Jordan to my right, on South Campus, almost until the day of his death. Both Jimmy and Jane were legends in their own time. We honor their memory with a moment of silence. Thank you, and thanks to Dr. Coronado for helping me research the two of them. All right, we have several reports, but first let's get the approval of the minutes out of the way, and I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Dr. Evans, second, Dr. Morrison, any comments or corrections? If not, they are approved as written. All right, we've been a traveling group this last month, and I'm starting with a trip to Washington DC legislative matters, and I'm going to ask Dr. Evans to report on that trip.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. We traveled to Washington DC, February 11th through the 13th, and it was a good trip. It was the 2019 Association of Community College Trustees, it was our National Legislative Summit, and we had the opportunity to visit with six of our congressional representatives, Mark VC, Congressman VC, Kay Granger, Kenny Marchand, Roger Williams, Michael Burgess, and Ron Wright. We had several matters that we advocated for in regard to our federal legislative priorities. One of them was short-term Pell Grants to expand eligibility for students enrolled in our short-term programs and workforce-oriented programs. The other was to increase the Pell Grant maximum award and to index Pell Grants to inflation. This helps to ensure that low-income students can attend college while reducing the need for borrowing. The other was the second chance Pell Grants, and this is important, of course, to facilitate post-secondary education for qualified incarcerated individuals. And there were several other legislative priorities as well. Madam President, one of the others, too, that I think is quite important, they all were, but the other was to support and advocate on behalf of our Dreamers to assist students impacted by the DACA rescission. And I think it is important to note that whether the representative was Democratic or Republican, that all held, for the most part, the same sentiment, and that is that we need to protect that particular population and formulate legislation that would give them an opportunity to become citizens in our United States. So that's just a Reader's Digest version of what we did while we were there. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for going. It was a long trip and a long days each day. Then another group went to the Community College Day in Austin, and I'm going to ask Dr. Patrick to lead that presentation.
Thank you. We had a very ambitious schedule while we were in Austin. We divided.
Diane, turn on your machine. Okay, thank you. We divided and conquered while we were there. Those of us who went to Austin saw all of our Tarrant County delegation, and we were able to talk to them at length about dual credit and about workforce education. But I have to tell you, as someone who has sat on the other side of the desk as a legislator for eight years, that the students who went with us were what made the difference. Their voices were heard, the state representatives and state senators were so impressed with our students. We were very, very proud of them. And with that, I'd like to call on Dr. Bill Lase, who organized getting the students there, and ask him to come forward, and we have some student representatives that are here to tell us about the day. And again, we'd just like to take this opportunity to thank you, Dr. Lase, and thank you, the students, because you're what make the difference and you're what it's all about.
Thank you, Dr. Patrick. Mrs. Appleman, Chancellor Giovanni, members of the board, it is absolutely wonderful for me, again, to be here before you after many years, especially because it gives me a chance to talk about one of my favorite subjects, and that's the excellence of TCC students. As Dr. Patrick said, we all went to Austin on January 30th. These students prided themselves out of bed at some unearthly hour to board a bus at 5:00 on South Campus for a three-hour trip to the state Capitol for Community College Day. Community College Day was begun by the Texas Association of Community Colleges in 1997, and it was a way, frankly, I think Dr. Patrick will agree, so that the legislators can see the difference that their appropriation to community colleges make. So they can, the proof of the pudding is our students. So we wanted to show them that they were getting a lot of bangs for their bucks. But it was a very interesting and educational experience for the students, so I'm going to let them tell you about it. So you will hear from, in order, Najah Jackson from TCC Northeast, Elizabeth Everett from Northwest, Christopher Cobb from Southeast, and Jeanette Diaz from Trinity River.
Good evening, members of the board. Sorry, I wrote mine down. So we had a great privilege to be able to attend the Capitol Day. In our attendance, we weren't able to meet with our representative, but we were able to network and meet other students from other campuses and be able to just have a very educational day. We weren't able to report back, but we were very thankful that we were able to experience because a lot of people may never get to experience it, so we were very thankful.
Thank you. You did a great job.
Good evening, Ms. Appleman, Chancellor Giovanni, and members of the board. My name is Elizabeth Everett, and I am the President of the Student Government Association at the Northwest Campus. I am so thankful to the Texas Association of Community Colleges for providing the opportunity of allowing me to represent the Northwest Campus at the Capitol. Being politically-minded, I was very excited to be included on this trip. This year, I have become aware that my fellow students seem disconnected from the voting process and their elected representatives. Walking through the sterile marble halls of the Capitol, I realize that the political world can seem inaccessible and irrelevant to some. This trip has inspired me to try to do something about this disconnect. It is crucial that students engage in the political process, knowing that their voice can be heard through their involvement. Representing TCC at the Texas State Capitol was an amazing opportunity, and not only benefited me, but it let their representatives know, our representatives know, that they have constituents at the Northwest Campus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Christopher Cobb, I'm from the Southeast Campus. I'm a Vice President of Student Government. I was excited to go to Austin and meet Chris Turner, which is one of our representatives. I'm actually gay, and the problem that I had was I was feared of losing my job because currently in Texas right now, gays can be fired just for being who they are. Another thing is conversion therapy, and I feel that it shouldn't be allowed in Texas, that it should be banned, and Chris Turner said that he would work on with his colleagues on creating a bill that would ban conversion therapy in Texas.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeanette Diaz, and the day for Community College at the state Capitol, I learned so much. I learned that a lot of the representatives are learners, just like we are at the community college. They're just going one day at a time and learning from thereon. I got a chance to, I can't remember who I met, because I couldn't meet with the person, but Mr. Heed, if I'm not mistaken, your name, he was there with me and somebody else, and it's just very, it was a very unique opportunity because I got to explore the state Capitol, and I've never been there. And now that I'm getting a little bit older, that I'm actually learning to enjoy history and government and all of that, and I got a tour guide to take me around, so I got a lot of good history from just going there. So thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for having us here tonight.
Good for you.
If the students would move behind the board, we're going to take a picture in a few minutes, but I would be remiss indeed if I did not thank the many people who helped me put this together. Our lead in the MOC was Maria Alvarado from Vice Chancellor Gates' office, and then from the campuses, and I would ask them to stand as they call their name and remain standing, Doug Peak, Kelsey Bratcher McGee, Tatiana Kissin, Carol Walker, and sitting in for Kay Carroll, Vesta Martinez. Now, I feel fairly confident that we will have Community College again in 2021, and so we will go down again, we'll have students, we probably will leave at 5:00 in the morning, and we will probably be wearing shirts very similar to this. I hope that trustees will go with us, but we want to make sure that you are properly dressed, so I would ask my colleagues to come forward, and we will make sure.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. I look forward to wearing it. Thank you. Maybe we should hold it up for pictures.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for having us.
We got to push in. Push in. Okay.
Slow down, Walt.
Yes.
Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry.
All right, thanks to y'all, we appreciate it. You're our best show-off product. Again, I need to say no more for everyone to understand why and how they were so impressed with the TCC students. So again, thank you, Dr. Lase, for putting us together, and thanks to everyone that made it happen, and thanks especially to the students, we're so very proud of you. We look forward to visiting you and your Capitol offices someday. We could say we knew them when. All right, Mr. Greenhill, you want to give a report from the perspective of the CCATT?
Not all, yeah. In addition to meeting legislators with the students, I participated in some activities as the Chair of our state organization. I started this day with giving some remarks before the gathering, it's called a rally, and we just need to mention the very dramatic entrance that was made by our trustees with Chris Turner, Diane Patrick, and one of the couple of the students came out of the Capitol steps down while the remarks were being made, and it was with Chris Turner, who also made some remarks. So it was very dramatic, and I think a lot of fun, but he was so nice to us at the time. I ended the day by going to a reception at the Tribune office put on by CATT and TACC. The guest speaker was Ross Ramsey, who is the co-founder of the Texas Tribune, and he gave us some very interesting remarks about the 86th session of the legislature and his predictions with respect thereto. The point I want to make about all this is that your trustees, the trustees and regents all over the state, and the presidents and chancellors and presidents and others are working very hard to advocate for community colleges in this legislative session, and I think we're doing a pretty good job of doing that. I also told Dr. Coppola that I was going to shout out for him, because, oh ho ho, you came back today or yesterday, you testified before the House Finance Committee. A Higher Education Committee, I'm sorry, the Higher Education. Chris Turner is the Chair of that committee, and I understand that you were outstanding, did a marvelous job, and congratulations on that, but kudos for you. But it was a very enjoyable occasion in Austin, and I look forward to doing it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heed only went a short distance, I think, for his next trip, and he has some news to share with us from the PFIA and the Transportation Summit.
Right. I sit on the Investment Committee for the TCC Foundation, and we're required to go to at least one day of training on PFIA, the Public Funds Investment Act. I went two days because I'm a glutton for punishment, but trustees are only required to take a one-hour video or look at a CD or listen to a CD, and this was an incredible program, and I think it's something that every trustee ought to go and listen to, and Mark, you may comment on that later on. But in addition to learning what the Public Fund Investment Act was all about, which, by the way, is updated every two years after the legislature meets, we talked about things related to compliance and fraud, internal control, investment basics, what gets investment officers in trouble, internet resources, and the Federal Reserve system. This was put on by the Center for Public Management at University of North Texas, and it's just an excellent program, and there are representatives there from every city, you know, big ones, the little ones, and so forth, cities and counties all across the state, and it's well worth the time spent, and thank you, Joe, for encouraging me to go to that. But I think the trustees ought to do that. In addition, I went to, by the way, Gary Fickus is one of our county We talked about Uber Lyft, which is something the chancellor's working on, bullet trains, and just all kinds of things related to transportation. How do we pay for it all? How do we pay for it now? And how are we going to pay for it in the future? Very, very informative session, and I urge everybody to go to that. Gary puts it on every year, and it's, they had incredible speakers, and it was just very worthwhile, the time to go to it, so. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Yala represented us this morning out on Northwest Campus.
Well, thank you very much. I had the opportunity to attend the National Career and Technical Education Letter of Intent Signing Day that was a ceremony held at Northwest Campus, and there were also similar ceremonies held at the South Campus as well. And it was honoring these incoming high school students that have committed themselves to enter a career in a technical field of study here at TCC. There we are with several of the students that were signing their letters today. It was a really wonderful event. There were families there, there were representatives from the ISDs, the chancellor was there, there was also TCC staff and faculty, and some corporate partners as well. They were there to recognize some, there were about 30 students, I think, at the Northwest Campus, and also to just celebrate their commitment to choosing a career in the technical field. It also was wonderful, because as I was sitting there listening and watching the students, it reminded me of why it is that I chose to attend TCC, and it was because I wanted a quality education, and that's what these students realize as well. So we're really happy to be a part of their choice. And so the celebration obviously emphasized our focus on being a student-ready college, and it was just a fantastic day, and I want to thank everyone that was involved. Thank you so much, Dr. Blankenbaker, Dr. Cooper also, for your hospitality. Thank you to the chancellor, he had some really, really wonderful remarks and encouraged the students, and really demonstrated our commitment to their success, and so it was a pleasure to be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you for going. It puts all those athletic signings to shame, I'm sure. Dr. Morrison, I think you sent in a picture of an event you attended, UT Southwestern?
Thank you. Good evening, and I am happy to be here with you tonight. And perhaps you know that as of 5:00 PM February 15th, only one person had filed for TCC Place Six, and that was Gwen Morrison. So, I give all the credit to our Stella employees and the everyday contacts that you make with our students and with the community. Thank you for that. So I look forward to vigorously pursuing the next six years with you, reshining old gold and expanding our reach in all areas as we continue our evolution as the community's college. And one of that outreach efforts was to attend the welcoming dinner for outstanding underrepresented minority medical students who have been approved to come to UT Southwestern, but they haven't all accepted. And so members of the community were asked to come and to wow them into coming to North Texas, and I was happy to be included among that. This is the young woman that invited me, and Kimberly Coleman, she works with the graduate dean, manages the graduate dean's office. So it was an awesome event. Past Secretary of Education Louis Sullivan was there. His son is actually a professor at UT Southwestern. So it was a wonderful evening and celebrating young people, and we got to tell them about, not only about Dallas, but Fort Worth and Terrant County College. So thank you all, and I do look forward to enthusiastically pursuing our three goals, eight principles, one college. Thank you.
And finally, you'll recall last month, we mentioned the community industry education folks, Dr. Hawkins, and who else is with you tonight? Fred Schmidt and others? Anyone else here from your department? Winning a state award, and then last week, they were honored by the Local Workforce Solutions Board, and to prove it to you, we brought the video that was shown about their work.
Community College Engagement Award.
We were excited to be in the audience in Houston, Texas during the 22nd Annual Texas Workforce Commission Conference, so we could cheer on Terrant County College, as they were awarded the Community College Engagement Award. This award highlights the important work of community colleges and other entities integral to preparing a skilled workforce. The colleges and organizations selected for recognition have demonstrated innovation in meeting the needs of local employers.
Terrant County College has been a longtime supporter and partner on many of our initiatives, including most recently working with the Adult Education and Literacy Program. Collaboration between AL and TCC Corporate Solutions provides a platform for future partnerships and delivering a seamless education and training experience for businesses and employees. This was a first-time partnership in administering a literacy-specific training for incumbent workers. These trainings are vital to employees' growth within the company and industry. The Aerospace Manufacturing Training Program. The alignment of this program with TCC offers dislocated and new workers, veterans and young adult participants, an entry point into the aerospace industry at wages that range from $16 to $26 an hour.
Skills Development Fund Grants. Terrant County College has partnered with us on numerous Skills Development Fund grants. In 2017 to 2018, it resulted in $1.6 million in job training, 1,537 employees receiving training, 41,139 total training hours, with companies such as Inspirus, Flexingate, Lockheed Martin, and the Manufacturing Robotics Consortium, made up of Client Tools, Miller Coors, and Pavement Services. We are grateful for all of our Terrant County College partners and friends, including Chancellor Eugene Giovinini, Board of Trustee President and Workforce Solutions Board Member Louise At this time, we would like to ask Dr. Jennifer Hawkins, Director of Corporate Solutions and Economic Development for Terrant County College District, along with members of her team, to please come forward to accept this award.
of her many efforts on behalf of the Workforce Training Division of our college, and so thank you, thank you for representing us so well. And Dr. Felkerson, if you're missing Frederick from time to time, it's because he's moonlighting. Stand up, Frederick. Sal Ladamsky retired from the Workforce Board after 25 years or so as well, and he acknowledged, in fact, there were six honorees that morning, and two of the others mentioned us in addition to that wonderful video. And then Sal, in accepting his, kudos on his retirement, mentioned Fred as helping him with special training for some of the veterans, and so once again, he's out in the community representing us very well. So thanks to you and your team, please convey our congratulations and thanks to them. Okay, that's it. Gina Bershura, thank you so much. She and I get together before every meeting and make sure we're all on the same page and the same list. Anything else? Oh, I don't know. You have it? Can send it to me? You have it online? Okay, thank you. All right. Back to business, but it's kind of fun to celebrate our successes, and we thank all of you for being part of that. Okay, there is a consent agenda item. All of you joined us at the Governance Committee meeting, so you know we met and what we did, and there will be an Audit and Finance Committee report next month. A Consent Agenda Item Number Five, Consideration and Approval of Recommendation for Faculty Promotion and Rank and Tenure. Motion to Approve?
Second.
Dr. Giovinini, you have anything to add to the material we have? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item Number Six, Consideration and Approval of Order Adopting Polling Locations and Revised Order of Election. Mr. Carr?
All right. Had to navigate getting out of the aisle without stepping on toes. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I come before you this evening with another motion, and I'll be here next month with another motion, and eventually we will have an election. The motion that I bring to you tonight is an order adopting polling locations and revising the order of election by including those polling locations. And I guess I will read the order, or excuse me, the motion and order. Whereas on January 17th, 2019, the Board of Trustees ordered an election for May 4th, 2019. The purpose of electing trustees to represent single-member districts Place Six, six-year term, six-year unexpired term or until a successor has been duly elected and qualified, and Place Seven, a six-year term or until a successor has been duly elected and qualified. And whereas, said order called for the election of trustees. However, polling locations for Election Day and early voting locations were not available at the time the order was adopted. They have now been provided by the Terrant County Elections Administrator. Accordingly, be it resolved and ordered by the Board of Trustees of Terrant County College District, that in accordance with the general laws of the legislature of the state of Texas pertaining to the election of trustees, the Board does hereby adopt the early voting times, dates, and locations, and selects those places identified and listed on the attached order of election, which is made a part of this resolution and order. As the polling locations for the single-member trustee districts Six and Seven, said locations will serve as precincts and polling places for the voters in Terrant County election precincts, which are assigned to said polling places for the May 4th, 2019 Terrant County College District trustee elections and any runoff if necessary. Be it further resolved and ordered, that the attached revised order of election is hereby adopted by the Board. And I will skip the second page, which deals with the motion was made by and seconded and so forth. Order of election. Be it ordered by the Board of Trustees of Terrant County College District, that on May 4th, 2019, there shall be a general election for the purpose of electing two members to the Board of Trustees. One member shall be elected from single-member district Six and serve a six-year term or until a successor has been duly elected and qualified. One member shall be elected from single-member district Seven to serve a six-year term or until a successor has been duly elected and qualified. And be it further, be it further ordered, that the member to be elected from single-member district Six shall be elected by the qualified voters of single-member district Six, and that the member to be elected from single-member district Seven shall be elected by the qualified voters of single-member district Seven. And be it further ordered, that all candidates seeking election as a member from single-member district Six must reside within single-member district Six, and all candidates seeking election as a member from single-member district Seven must reside within single-member district Seven. Each candidate must reside in the specific single-member district for six months preceding the final day to file for such office. The final date of file is February 15, 2019. And be it further ordered, that every candidate must designate that he or she is a candidate for single-member district Six or single-member district Seven on his or her application to become a candidate. Such application shall be filed with the Secretary of the Board or his designee not later than 5:00 PM on the 15th day of February 2019. And be it further ordered, that on the first Saturday in May 2019, being the fourth day of May 2019, the election shall be held from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on said day. If no candidate receives a majority of votes cast for the office for which he or she is a candidate, a runoff election shall be held on the 8th day of June 2019. Only the name of the two candidates who receive the highest number of votes for the office for which a runoff is required shall be placed on the ballot for such runoff election. And be it further ordered, that notice of said election shall be given by publishing the election order in a newspaper in Terrant County, Texas, and by posting notice of this order of election. Notice shall be posted prior to April 15, 2019, on the bulletin board used for posting notice of trustee meetings of the Terrant County College District. Notice shall also be published between the dates of April 4th, 2019, and April 24th, 2019, in accordance with Section 4.003 Texas Election Code. And be it further ordered, that Hyder Garcia is hereby appointed early voting clerk. His mailing address is P.O. Box 961011, Fort Worth, Texas 76161-0011, and whose street address is 2700 Premier Street, Fort Worth, Texas 76111. Early voting for the college, early voting for the election of college district trustees shall be held at the times, dates, and locations identified and listed on Attachment A, which is made a part of this election order. The Board finds, determines, and declares that those designated early polling locations can adequately and conveniently serve the affected voters of this college district, and will facilitate the orderly conduct of this election. Be it further resolved and ordered, that the Board of Trustees of the Terrant County College District adopts those locations identified and listed on Attachment B, which is made a part of this election order, as the Election Day polling locations for this trustee election. Each Election Day site is located within the college district and will serve as precincts and polling places for those voters in the Terrant County College precinct, election precincts, which are assigned to said polling place for the May 4th, 2019 Terrant County College District trustee election and any runoff if necessary.
Oh, Mr. Carr, we're looking for Attachment B. None of us seems to have, which I think is the list of the polling places. Remind me what happens if, with, in Dr. Morrison's case, she doesn't have an opponent, so do we open those polls? Are they removed from that list?
They will be.
We approve it as it is now.
Because of the logistics and the procedures that are required to submit documents to this board and stuff, we weren't absolutely sure whether there'd be contested or non-contested races. So I will be back next month with an order, a motion in order to revise this election order and canceling the election for the district Dr. Morrison resides in.
Okay, great. Thank you. Motion to approve. Dr. Patrick, seconded by Mr. Heed. Any other questions or clarifications or comments? If not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We'll see you next month.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Item Number Seven, Consideration and Approval of a Contract with Bennett Benner Partners to Provide District Staff Relocation Design Services in the Amount of $674,321.35. Motion to approve. Dr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Heed. Mrs. Petty?
Good evening. Yes, this is for a design services contract.
Good evening, yes, this is for a design services contract with Bennett Benner Partners, and it is the work that needs to be done to move the May Owen Center district employees, Trinity River East, four, third floor employees, and Water Garden Foundation employees to new space at the Trinity River Campus. And again, this is a design services contract, we're in the middle of programming, it'll estimated to take about three to four months to complete this work, then we'll come back to you with a construction contract for that, and we're anticipating to be moving late 2021. And we'll know more about that schedule as we move through this work and come back to you with more details there.
And we visited at length about this at the governance committee meeting, are there any additional questions or concerns? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, consideration and approval of contract renewal with GCA Education Services to provide district ground services in an amount not to exceed $485,284.50. Motion to approve. Mr. Heed, seconded, Dr. Evans, Mrs. Petty.
Yes, this is for district ground services for the May Owen Center, Trinity River, Trinity River East, our Center of Excellence up at Alliance, and our Opportunity Center. It is the third optional one-year renewal, and we hope you will approve this. It's for March 19 through March 2020.
Questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor, aye? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, we covered us in governance, but what percentage of this is minority business?
Mike, 20%, yes.
20%, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number nine, consideration and approval of a contract, JQ Engineering, to provide design services for South Campus Welding Technology Lab in the amount of $159,630. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Dr. Evans, seconded by Dr. Morrison, Mrs. Petty.
Yes, this is at our South Campus, we do have welding at our Alliance property, and also at our Opportunity Center. The current space at the South Campus does not really meet the increasing demand for the growth at the welding program, and we have identified some space there. And again, this is for the design contract only, we'll be coming back to you for the construction contract. Estimated completion is two to four months.
Questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, consideration and approval of final deductive change order of North, to Northeast Campus Central Plaza side improvements in the amount of a credit, $42,642.62. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Heed, seconded, Dr. Evans, Mrs. Petty.
Yes, this is returning unused owner contingency on the project at the Northeast Campus for the Central Plaza improvements.
Questions? There never any questions when you're giving us money back. Well, I don't know why I ask. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it, thank you. Item number 11, consideration and approval of contract with Johnson Controls to purchase chiller replacements for Northeast Campus in the amount of $1,357,217. Dr. Evans, motion, and Dr. Patrick, second. Mrs. Petty?
Northeast Campus, again, this is equipment purchase for a chiller replacement. It is a very innovative type of equipment that will provide us a rebate from Encore for efficiencies. And the existing chillers were installed in 8794, so they're really at the end of their useful life.
Questions, concerns? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, oh, sorry, excuse me, item 12, consideration and approval of contract with Facility Solutions Group to provide Northwest Campus medium voltage upgrades in the amount of $3,394,392.40. Motion to approve. Did I skip 11? Where'd I go? Sorry.
No.
12.
You're on 12.
I must not have an update.
Northeast Student Center exterior doors replacement.
Got it, okay, let's go back, my apologies. Item number 12, consideration and approval of contract with Freedom Construction to replace Northeast Campus Student Center exterior doors in the amount of $450,375.22. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Heed, seconded, Dr. Evans, Mrs. Petty.
Yes, again, Northeast Campus, this is for the student center only, it is exterior door replacement, 40-year-old doors. There's a lot involved, more than just the door itself, so it includes all the construction and framing and all the concrete work and walkways and all that, that includes up to the doors.
Questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're to item number 13, sorry. Consideration and approval of contract with Facility Solutions Group to provide Northwest Campus medium voltage upgrades in the amount of $3,394,392.40. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, and seconded by Dr. Evans. Mrs. Petty?
Yes, Northwest Campus, this is, as everyone knows, the campus is 40 years old, and this is electrical service points for Encore, it's very important as it relates to our master planning for that campus, so this aligns with the work that we're doing there, it really brings that campus up to speed from an infrastructure voltage standpoint, so we hope you'll approve it.
Questions, concerns? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, consideration and approval of final deductive change order to Southeast Campus Bus Service Project in the amount of $44,471.55. Motion to approve. Dr. Evans, seconded by Dr. Morrison, Mrs. Petty.
Yes, this is Southeast Campus Bus Service Project, it's complete, and the project included new concrete and paving, electrical infrastructure, and a bus stop. And we hope that you will approve this, so we can return the unused portion to the owner contingency.
Is it a nice bus stop?
It is, isn't it, Dr. Capola?
Would mess up your hair. Protects your hairdo. Me too. All right, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15, consideration and approval of contract with Mark Inc. to provide Southeast Campus exterior access control installation in the amount of $1,078,000. Motion to approve. Dr. Patrick, seconded by Mr. Greenhill. Mrs. Petty?
Yes, Southeast Campus, this is exterior access control, the campus was built in 96, these exterior doors must be manually locked and unlocked, and cannot be automatically controlled to match our operational hours, are remotely controlled down for the event of emergency, this, this is really a safety and security project.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Keeping me on track. Mr. Pacheco, item number 16, consideration and approval of renewal purchase of Palo Alto Firewall device subscriptions and maintenance support in the amount of $192,743. Motion to approve. Mr. Heed?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Evans. Mr. Pacheco, would you like to comment?
Yes, this is a subscription and maintenance for this coming year for our Palo Alto Firewall devices. It includes updates as well as real-time threat analysis.
Questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 17, consideration and approval of contract with DNM Enterprises to provide pathways program management services in an amount not to exceed $2,081,280. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Dr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Greenhill. Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, this is the one-year extension of the DNM's ongoing engagement that we have with TCC as part of the 3G 8P initiative, and there, the program leads on this and really helping us frame this entire effort.
Questions, concerns? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Dr. McLendon?
Good evening, this is our financials, this is the fifth month of our fiscal year, and if we look at our revenue, we have a year-to-date of 271, and it represents about 72% of our income to date, which is as planned. When we looked at our total expenses, we looked at everything that would be greater than 50%. Right now, we're showing a year-to-date of 145 mil, which is 45.2%. However, we did, we always bring and mention any item that is above the threshold 50%, and this time, this month, we had the tax and administrative costs, and we spent 1.7 mil, so that's what drove it to 94%, but it is a contract that represents the service for 12 months. And so by, we recognize the cost, but just to show you what is bringing that. So now we should go to our investments, okay? And our investments to date, our pools increased 56.7, this is just like expected from our revenue that's coming from our taxes. We have no activity in the short term, we have one agency security that matured for $10 million. We bought three securities for $10 million respectively, at 2.61 interest, 2.62 interest, and 2.95. So our total portfolio has increased by 76.9, our yield is 2.21, just like short-term, all right? And our WHAM is 326 days.
One of the, one, one of the things that you learn in this PFIA training is how much hard work that Mark and his staff do to keep us in with compliance, so we thank you for that. And, and would you recommend that the board go to these trainings?
I would say that PFIA training is an excellent use of eight hours of your time, it is really interesting, but, you know, beauty is always eyes in the beholder, but it really gives you a good feeling of how interested in all the things that you can do about public financing. Yes, sir, I would definitely personally recommend it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Dr. McLendon, or any comments? All right. Chancellor?
Yes, Dr. Madison has an introduction to make, Dr. Madison.
Good evening, Chancellor, Board of Trustees. Over the past years, the Center for Healthcare Professions has been expanding its capacity to be more responsive to the needs of the healthcare industry. In order to do so, we have worked to better optimize organizational performance to leverage our talent, not only to meet those needs, but also to support the college's strategic imperatives. One of the outcomes of this optimization strategy was the creation of the college's first Dean of Nursing, and I'm delighted to introduce him this evening. After a national search, the college named Dr. Tetsuya Umebayashi as the new Dean of Nursing, and he assumed this role on January 7th. Dr. Ume, as he is affectionately called, exemplifies nursing excellence and is a celebrated and respected nursing professional. He is the former Assistant Dean of Nursing, where he was charged to develop the college's vocational nursing program, which recently graduated its first cohort. Under his leadership, he engaged a partnership between Catholic Charities and the TCC Foundation to support the first class of vocational nursing students. As a result of his insightful leadership, 97% of the first class graduated this past summer, and 100% of those students passed their licensure examination. In this role, he has also collaborated with the IT department to create a pharmacolo, pharmacological, pharmacology online course, an electronic charting system, and dosage calculation modules for the benefit of students. Dr. Ume joined TCC 10 years ago as faculty, and has taught several levels of the nursing program. Since then, he has been a staunch supporter of student success, embracing one of the campus's hallmarks, which speaks to an unwavering focus on student success. He has also served leadership roles as course coordinator. Clinically, Dr. Ume has 10 years' experience in the ICU, medical surgical telemetry, emergency room areas. He holds a BSN from Midwestern State, an MSN, a doctorate of nursing practice from Walden University, and is bilingual in English and Japanese. He received the TCC President's Award in 2015, the Community Service Award in 2015, the Hallmark Award 2013, the Dean's Extra Mile Award in 2010, and it is so befitting because he is one who goes the extra mile in any and everything that he does, as well as the Daisy Award for Excellence in Patient Care. He has also established strong and well-respected relationships with the Texas Board of Nursing, and a host of healthcare industry and community partnerships within this region. Indeed, Dr. Ume's entrepreneurial leadership style and his knowledge of the regional healthcare landscape will strengthen our efforts to meet the increasing needs of the healthcare industry and the goals of students who are interested in careers in healthcare. Anyone, and I mean anyone, who has worked with Dr. Ume knows he is diligent, passionate about TCC, and a strong advocate for nursing excellence, nursing, excuse me, excellence in nursing education. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Tetsuya Umebayashi.
Good evening. I am so honored to be Dean of Nursing at Tarrant County College. I am deeply committed to the faculty, staff, and student experience. I am very excited to work with the community to continue its legacy of creating the best nurses who care for the Tarrant County resident. It is crucial for us to prepare the next generation of nurses, which, who will impact the quality of healthcare locally, nationally, and globally. I am also deeply committed to creating a seamless pathway to the associate degree nursing and bachelor degree in nursing. Thank you, everyone, for giving me this opportunity to do so. Once again, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to report that we continue our preparation for a TCC 2019 no-property tax bond package, and as stated in late, publicly late in 2018, a bond package will be placed before the voters to address approximately $750 to $800 million of college capital needs. The funding will allow us to continue to plan for new buildings, which are necessary for growth and replacement. It will also allow us to expand our early college high school student programs, remove student classrooms from modular buildings, bring our student learning environments up to modern-day technology and engagement standards, and improve important building infrastructure to include safety and security. Much due diligence has already been completed, we will be working to quantify the community and student benefit and economic impact of our plans, we will also continue to receive feedback from our academic and workplace workforce partners, as well as the entire community at large. I expect this 2019 bond package to go before the voters in November. We will continue our updates as we complete our preparation for hopefully a successful election, thank you. All right.
We're having a little tug of authority. I want him to tell you about, I win. My name's at the top of the page, right? He's had quite a day today with some very important people on behalf of Tarrant County College, and I want him to report to you.
Okay, it was yesterday, Senator Cornyn visited the area, and specifically, a number of events that he had, but specifically spent some time with us as it relates-
of events that he had, but specifically spent some time with us as it relates to his interest in career in technical education. And had the opportunity on a panel, and led the panel off, to talk about the good work that we're doing. They wanted to hear about aerospace and plans for unmanned vehicles, so we talked about up in Seattle and all the programs and services we offer there, all our partners and workforce partners. But what was most rewarding, the next four or five people that spoke were either Tarrant County college students, Tarrant County College graduates, business owners, or people who have had affiliation through Tarrant County College with the program. And it was quite impressive to the senator. As we finished up, he came over to me and engaged me in conversation related to the work that we're doing. So congratulations all for the work. It was certainly easy to represent and a very willing ear for Senator Cornyn, and you can tell it was impressive to him and a unique experience for him. So all in all, it was a very good day. Thank you.
We thank Dr. J. Talk about moonlighting and doing a little extracurricular work, so thank you very much. I think we are adjourned. We have no closed session tonight, so good night. Thank you for being with us.